I'm going to call this notice, or I'm going to call this special meeting of the city of Urbana and Cunningham Township to order. Oh, we have Heather as well. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barnes? Ms. Powers?
Let's wait. He's in here.
Yeah, he'll get here. We got four with Heather.
We've got four.
Ms. Chenoweth? Mr. Lewis?
President?
Mr. Robbins?
Here.
Mr. Smye?
Here.
Stevenson?
President?
Mayor President.
Here.
You want to take over Heather's?
It doesn't matter to me. I, if you want me to go, I can go ahead. But it's totally.
The first, this is presentations by consolidated social service funding pool applicants. And first up is Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club. And the program is school-based positive youth development groups for middle school girls and boys.
Yes. Evening council. My name's Andrea Arrington, Executive Director of the Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club. Today I have with me Brittany Fryer. She's one of our program coordinators, and Mr. Steve Higgins, he's a school social worker with Urbana Middle School. What we are presenting to you today is a collaboration that Boys and Girls Club and Urbana Middle School has already embarked upon. And we piloted the project this year, and would like to expand upon this project for next fiscal year. We would like to have a request before the council of $9,375. I would like to make sure that we're very clear. Boys and Girls Club does have a, its traditional proposal before the council as well for its funding to service the East Urbana and its school base, I mean its schools, Yankee Ridge, in regards to transportation and for summer programming. So this is a separate project beyond that funding there. So I wanted to make sure I was clear with the council. At this time, Mr. Higgins will talk about the formulation of the collaboration.
Thank you. This past school year, as Andre had mentioned, that we had done a pilot program with the Boys and Girls Club, Smart Girls, and have had approximately 12 to 15 girls participating two days a week. And the feeling was that we wanted to expand that program for this next school year, which would include a combination of 60 girls and 60 boys. And in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club, we would be working with the Women's Fund, where they would be focusing on young men's groups. So very excited about it. A number of the girls, what's been really quite wonderful about our program this year with the Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club, is that because Brittany has come in and working very closely with us, the girls are coming in on their own, talking about what issues may come up for them in the school setting, or of course even in the community. Part of this is in conjunction with the social-emotional learning standards that the State of Illinois passed in 2003. And if you're familiar with it, school districts are, in fact, Urbana Middle School is one of the pilots for the State of Illinois on developing social-emotional learning standards for middle school students. And as you can imagine, with 900-plus students, that's quite a task. But one of the things that we have found that's very important is the whole idea of collaboration with agencies. And that collaboration just allows us to be able to expand in helping our students to develop better decision-making skills, awareness of themselves, family communication matters, and a sense of belonging, not only within the school setting, but also within the community. A part of this that I, that I really appreciate, and if you had a chance to read our proposal, would be establishing a service learning project. And I feel part of that would be, the Boys and Girls that would be part of this, they would be coming back to the council to talk with you about the service learning project within the Urbana community. A lot of the research indicates that if youth have that sense of belonging, even within their own community, there is a reduction in juvenile activities, that maybe kids are not making the best decisions. So I certainly feel it's something that would be really quite beneficial for the community, and one again that I'm really quite excited about.
At this time, we presented you some packets of information. We wanted to kind of give you an introduction of what Smart Girls is about, as well as what, what has already been accomplished with the Smart Girls program. And Brittany will speak to that. Brittany?
As of right now, I'm facilitating three different groups. The three different groups that I'm facilitating is the Urbana group, Urbana Middle School. Also, I'm facilitating the Park Street group. And we just finished the collaboration with Girl Scouts. We've been working on several different components for each group. As of right now, we have nine participants in the Park Street group, and we have 16 girls in the Girl Scouts group. And we have 12 participants, and sometimes we have 15, depends on the day, in the girls' classes right now with Urbana Middle School. We basically have been going over different topics such as physical and emotional growth, media and body, media influenced body images, also sexual myths, truth, those are just some of the components that we work on. We have done several different sessions within each group. We have Park Street, we've done three sessions, as you can see. And each session is an hour to hour and a half, depending on which group at the time that's participating.
So, as you can see, the focus why Boys and Girls Club got behind the Smart Girls initiative was, one, we've placed a lot of resources around young men. And then we looked in the mirror and we said, you know, what are we doing for young ladies? So we were starting to do things inside the clubhouse, and then Steve placed a phone call to me, and then we was like, hey, we think we have an opportunity here that we can extend this over to Urbana Middle School as well. And so I think it has worked out extremely good. This is kind of other duties as assigned for Brittany. Now we're just kind of looking at if we can find a few more dollars so we can expand this to touch 60 kids as opposed to 12 kids. And so, and that's what these resources would go for. Because Carl Hospital also does a sponsorship that helps us to do the program in-house for the, for the club. Any questions at this time?
Yeah, just real quickly. So you want to, you want to basically quadruple the program, which is very ambitious. It's not very expensive here. You've got matching funds from other sources.
Yes.
Okay. And, and then where's it physically located? At the Boys and Girls Club, or at the middle school?
At the middle school.
At the middle school. So they, this is, is it basically sort of an after-school program then?
Well, we actually, right now, during, during.
Well, we've been allowed to, to work it during the school day, during elected classes.
Ah, okay.
And so that has worked out very well for us. Yeah, I, one of the things I just wanted to mention too, is that I, getting in the beginning, is that we'd be working very closely with the School of Social Work. And so bringing up to maybe six to eight graduate students in to co-facilitate the groups. Again, if you look at your packets, I did add what are called 40 developmental assets. It's from the Search Institute out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. And what they have found in their research, the more assets that a child has, the more successful they are going to be in their lives. And on, generally, when kids enter sixth grade, they have, on the average, about 23 assets. And at the end of eighth grade, it's right around 19. So they fluctuate between that 23 at the beginning, down to the 19 in different particular areas. But it is research-based, and one of the important parts, again, is more adults than children in their lives. And more adults that kids have in their lives, again, more successful they're going to be. And again, more sense of belonging within their community and within their school.
Dennis?
Yeah, I read, I was able to read the documentation that you had given to us, or you had submitted in your application originally. And I was going to ask you exactly about the cofacilitation of people from the School of Social Work. And so, do you have that program? Have you talked to the people over there for that program?
Yes, we have.
And are the students that are going to come over, are they going to get educational credit for that? Or is it going to be a volunteer effort, or what?
Well, volunteer effort plus or maybe one class that students may be coming out of. So we haven't yet determined that part. With the schools program, on the average, they have between 25 and 30 people in the schools for specialty in social work. So the idea was to give them some on-hand experience, actually doing some work within the school setting.
Okay. Well, that seemed really positive to me. I thought that was a good aspect of it. Thanks.
Mayor?
Can you tell me how much you're getting from the state? I couldn't find it. Just look.
From the state, in regards to this?
Right.
Now, we get funding from our Teen Reach Program. That's our state funding. Would maybe you're thinking about in our, the hundred thousand.
I was talking about this particular program. You said you have a state grant, so.
No, no. Carl Foundation does a sponsorship of this program.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's Carl and Urbana? And anything else?
No. Our current dollars that we have, what we're trying to do to expand this, it will be with the additional dollars from Urbana.
Okay. But the total source right now is only Carl?
Right now, yes.
Okay.
And we blend some funds from our Teen Reach Program as well. And we take some funding from there.
Okay.
Yes.
Are there any other questions, comments? Thank you for your time. Next, I have application number six, Marilyn Keller Child Care Center.
Good evening. My name is Kelly White. I'm the Executive Director of Marilyn Keller Child Care Center. I wanted to tell you a little bit about our infant toddler program. We currently serve 16 children, and 90% of those children in that class, in those classrooms, come from low-income, single-parent households. Whose incomes are below the poverty level. If you're not familiar with the Illinois Department of Human Services subsidized childcare program, what it is, is the parents have to be working to be on this program, or they have to be working in continuing education programs, which can be pretty difficult if you're a single parent. They require you, if you're going to be in, going to Parkland, or you're going to the U of I, you still have to work 10 hours a week at the same time going to school. It's very difficult for a lot of our parents. So that's why we're there, to provide childcare for them 24, you know, all day long. Most of the children in there have a sibling that's in another classroom, which is very nice to have. We have a lot of brothers and sisters coming into the program. We're requesting money to fund that program. The dollar amount that we receive from the state does not support our daily costs for providing childcare. And a lot of that has to do with children under three years of age require, from DCFS, lower child-staff ratio. So you have to have more staff for less children in the classroom. For example, our infant toddler room has eight children in it and two staff members. Where in our two-year-old room, we can have one staff member to eight children, and it gets even higher when you get into the older classrooms. But the cost of staffing those classrooms is extremely expensive. At the same time, the supplies are, you need more things for the infants and toddlers and children under two. And that's what we're asking, is to fund, help fund our infant toddler program. We've been in existence since 1970. So it's been a long, long program. Recently, we became a collaboration site of Head Start. We've been doing that for about 10 years in our preschool program. And within the last year and a half, we became an early Head Start classroom. So we provide services to our families, Head Start services. We have a family advocate that's assigned to our center that helps the families if they're under some kind of stress, even though, you know, finding a dentist that will take them. You know, they've often used the dental clinic here, the doctor's office at Urbana High School. A lot of our families have access to that where they didn't before. It was very difficult to find that for these low-income families. We also have a child development specialist that works with myself and the staff to make more developmentally appropriate environments for the children. And it's working out very well in that classroom. Does anybody have any questions?
Danielle?
Thanks for your presentation. What is the demand like for the infant toddler program for people who require some sort of subsidy?
It's very high. I have a waiting list that's probably got 55 to 60 people on it. And a lot of the problem is that they might have a sibling attached to them. There might be an older brother and sister. And then they're looking for more of a, they don't want one child here, one child there. So that's a difficult for them also. Because my class, my other classrooms are just generally full. Once we get a child in as an infant, they stay with us until they go to kindergarten.
Okay. And what criteria do you use to select on the waiting list?
It's basically first call. I just start going down the waiting list.
Okay.
You know, by the date you're called.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Charlie?
Yeah, I guess it's not clear to me whether you're, are you going to be able to actually expand the number of kids you handle here?
We would need to get additional funding. Right now, we receive for that program, we receive funding from United Way. They support a big part of her infant toddler program. And of our preschool program, some of that funding comes in to support that. We would need to get more than just this.
This is part of your effort to get more money?
Mm-hmm.
So you really don't know how many?
No, because we'd have to hire more staff to do that.
Okay.
Dennis?
What's the, I guess, how far away do people come to participate in this childcare? Is it immediate neighborhood? Is it kind of extended into generally East Urbana? Or, do you have any sense of that?
It seems to be from all over Champaign County, really.
All over Champaign County?
Right. A lot of people might live outside of county, but they drive in here to work, especially for companies like Solo Cup. We have a lot of parents that drive into here.
Did you request funding last year?
Yes.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next, I have application number 18, Urbana Park District.
My name is Ellen Kersenoff, and I work for the Urbana Park District. I'm here, we had two applications this year. One is the Youth Scholarship Fund. And that is the, that's an ongoing program that we ask for support for every year. Each year, the Park District gives youth scholarships to children throughout the year in a number of programs, most of the programs that we offer. But this application specifically requests funds for us to provide youth scholarships for children from Urbana who financially qualify for those, and it's to attend day camp. We know that day camp for many families is about the most viable alternative they have for childcare for many people. So this is something we try and support as much as we can. We give as many of youth scholarships for day camp as we possibly can give. So the Park District is hoping that, you know, you will help fund again this year. We've increased the, or, well, we've requested in the application, we've increased that this year because the requests keep going up for us every year, and we're just trying to keep pace with that, with those requests. We raise money from individuals and from other sources beside the CDBG grant. So, you know, the, the total source of funding does not come from this grant. We provide about $50,000 in youth scholarships every year. The majority of that is Park District funds and individual donors. So I can answer any questions that you might have about the program, or?
Are there any questions for Ellen? Danielle?
Yeah, each, each year when we talk about this program, it always, there's always a disturbing element to it, because it seems like with youth summer camp, everyone who wants to go to summer camp should be able to go. And the Park District is a public entity, and so there shouldn't be barriers to access, just like there's not barriers to access to using the parks, et cetera. And so, yes, I know that the referendum didn't pass. I pushed hard for it. We didn't make it. But the question I have in some ways is, is ideally, sustainably, the funding for youth programming in the summer should be able to come out of the taxing base of the Park District. And the city's supplement of that is, it comes and goes. It's not steady in the same way that the tax base for this program is. So I guess my question is, and it's not a criticism necessarily, because, you know, I just, I strongly believe that all young people should have a chance to go to summer camp. And each year, there are young people in Urbana who can't go to summer camp because there aren't enough scholarships, and it creates also a status situation where there's kids on scholarships and kids that aren't. So I guess my question is, is, why is it the case that this doesn't get greater priority from the Park District, such that it has to be scrapping for private funds and, and funds from the CDBG?
Well, that's a very good question. And it would take a bit more background even than I have on how we budget funds. We put as much money toward the youth scholarships as we can. With all the other things the Park District does, and with the way funds are designated, the, what's, what's usable for the youth scholarship funds can be limited at times because of the needs of the Park District and the designation for some of the funds that we get. Taxes are levied in different, in different ways. And some funds that are levied are very designated, they can only be spent in certain ways. So of the general fund, which is what can be spent on pretty much anything, that has to go for a lot of different things. So the proportion is talked about in staff, in the staff process, and we always feel that we're putting as much as we possibly can toward it.
Do you have a sense of how many kids applied and couldn't go to summer camp last summer?
No, that I do not have a feel for the number who did not receive scholarships. I don't have that information of the ones that were not funded.
Okay.
My understanding is it's relatively small. They, even, even if they can't receive a full scholarship, we try to give partial scholarships if we can, to make sure that we can help in some, if, if that's the difference, we try and make up the difference if we can. If we can't give a full scholarship, we'll give a partial one.
Okay.
To make it affordable.
And do you know how the prices for the Urbana Park District camp compare to, like, YMCA camps or other camps in the area?
I've been told, I've asked that of Dan Gible, the Superintendent of Recreation, who oversees this program, and he told me that we're the most affordable.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've got four kids. They are. I've shopped around.
Yeah. That's what, I've, he's always said that we are the, we are the most affordable in town, so.
Would it be possible to get the number of applicants who weren't able to receive any funding, but who applied, went through the application process?
Yes.
For last year?
I would believe Dan's got that, so yeah.
Okay.
I'll ask for that.
Yeah, if you could just email it to Kelly, or?
Okay.
And then she can distribute it to the council members. Appreciate your answers.
Carol Elliott has a question?
Oh, yeah. Hi, Kelly.
I just had a quick question.
Uh-huh.
I experienced summer camps and sending my son to them many summers. And if I recall, there was, another problem is getting kids in before it fills up quickly. And I'm wondering if there are a certain number of spots that are held for scholarships? Because we used to call, like, in January and February to make sure our kids were enrolled and, because by May, it was full, or something like that. And it could be that's changed. That's been 15 years ago.
Right.
But do you set aside slots for scholarship kids?
That's a question I really can't answer, and I'd hate to say yes and find out I was wrong. So I would get that information and give that to you as well. I'd rather have the correct information.
Dennis?
What's the duration, say, in the number of weeks of the camp? And do you offer different sections of camp? I.e., could a person sign up for the first five weeks or first four weeks? Another group set up, sign up for the second four weeks or whatever?
Yeah, there are two-week sessions.
Two-week sessions?
Two-week blocks and sessions. And yes, they can sign up for one, two-week session, or they can do the entire summer, or, and they can, we offer a number of different camps. We have Earthscope Camp, which is at the Nature Center. We have Sports Adventure Camp at Brookins Gym, Culture Camp, and, and the Arts Camp happen over at Phillips Recreation Center. So they really can kind of try one of each if they'd like. If they want to register for Earthscope Camp, they can do that. Then they can do Sports Adventure Camp, then they can, you know, do one of the others. So the two-week block of time actually seems to work pretty well for that purpose.
Uh-huh.
So.
Thank you, Ellen.
Did I, should I speak to the second one now, or is that a later application? I can do either one.
I, I just.
They both want to, next, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. That one, it's, this is a new application, the Victory Park Garden Program. We put in a request for the, some of you are familiar with the Victory Park redevelopment project. The construction's almost complete, and everything now, we're ready to go, pretty much. And the part of the project was community garden plots. Those have been constructed and are pretty much ready to go. So we are now looking to implement an organic garden program, very similar to what we do out at Meadowbrook Park. And this is going to be for neighbors of Victory Park who want to, you know, have their own garden, learn, you know, some of the same gardening skills, and, and just utilize that for a food source. So we hope to spread that garden from Meadow, program at Meadowbrook and spread that over to Victory Park. And the grant is for $1,000, and it's really to help us with staff oversight and leadership costs of that program, and then supplies for the people who have rented the garden plots. There's, there will be a nominal fee for the people renting it, but we hope to cover the majority of the costs through this grant program. So it's brand-new, but I think we have pretty good success with our garden programs, and we're looking forward to starting one in Victory Park.
Mimi?
Yeah.
Danielle?
I just have a couple of questions. I think this is a really fantastic idea. Is the $1,000 need a recurring need, or is it a one-time need?
Some of it will be a one-time need, but the majority is a recurring need, because that will be covering some of our costs to administer the program. It'll be the staff from the Nature Center who will be covering that.
Okay. And is the, will the park, will the garden beds only be open to people in a particular geographic location, or will be all Urbana residents?
We're hoping, well, the goal is to have the neighbors of Victory Park use those garden beds. So yeah, it will be geographic, because it's a neighborhood park, and we want it to be neighbors of the park who use the garden beds.
Okay. So you'll have some kind of East Urbana geographic limitation.
Yes.
And have you approached the East Urbana Neighborhood Association? The CSA would also provide support for this?
Yeah, we have talked to HUNA about this. We have not asked them for, for funding support, no. But they've actively been involved in the whole process, and they've actually been helping us get the word out about the program and letting neighbors know, you know, that it's going to start, we're, we'll be ready soon, and to help us get the application process started. So, but we've not asked for funding, no.
Okay. But something, Charlie wants to know how many plots?
There's going to be four.
Four.
Four, four to start with, and we're hoping then to expand.
Okay. So be four individuals or four households?
Mm-hmm.
Who do it?
Yeah, right.
And out at Meadowbrook, are the, are the organic garden plots self-sustaining, or does the Park District have to contribute something each year for that?
There's, well, they're not completely self-sustaining. There is a cost to the Park District. We don't cover staff costs through that program significantly. We, there is some cost covered, but not 100%. But that's kind of been built into the Nature Center's budget over 20-plus years.
Okay.
So it's, but we, we do pay the staff separately from that.
And would anyone in the neighborhood, would the people who use the plot plots pay anything for them, or would it be?
Oh, at Meadowbrook?
No, oh, here.
Victory Park. Yes, there is a fee.
Okay.
There is a fee. We tried to, we're starting out, we want it to be as minimal as possible, just to get people into the program and, and everything. So we're, yeah, but there is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Dennis?
Yeah, maybe a few questions. Well, of course, I guess I'm curious what the fee will be. Have you established one yet? As a prototype?
Actually, I believe so. I know Kate up at the Nature Center gave me a budget, and she had, I think the fee was $38? Let me look real quick to see what the fee was going to be. It's 20. I knew it was something like that. It's $28.
Okay.
Yep. And that's for the summer.
For the summer.
Yeah.
Also, you're looking for recovering costs for leadership and staffing to oversee, oversee the site? And I understand, of course, somebody has to be there to make, monitor, make sure that the, the water faucet is indeed turned off at night or whatever, and the hoses are collected and such. And that's good. Are, are you going to look for a part-time help staff? Are you looking for like students to assist you in this? This is not a, a detail, a very significantly detailed job, but it does require people who are dependable.
Right. This will be, we hire a lot of seasonal positions for the summer, and this will be, under Kate's supervision, this will be a seasonal employee.
Well, do you, one or a couple, have you decided?
I'm not sure that Kate's decided that.
Okay, thanks.
I, I'm, I'm not 100% sure on that one.
Do you think that twenty-eight dollars might be high for that neighborhood area, or not? It's half the cost.
Yeah.
I've never done it at Meadowbrook, so I'm not aware.
I, I know that they were, you know, it was not going to be the same at Meadowbrook. They were gonna, and so, you know, I'm not sure if that's high for the neighborhood or not.
And you, I know that you have both raised beds for handicapped accessibility, and you're planning some ground-level beds. Will, will the raised beds be operational as well? When you're, if you're, if you're going to be doing four beds, I think you've got maybe four raised beds? Is that correct, or so?
Right.
But you're going to add additional ground-level beds?
Right.
And they'll both be available?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Dennis asked about watering?
Yeah.
With the hose. Have you ever talked about things like rain barrels?
Yes, actually.
Is that relevant to this?
Um, staff has discussed looking at doing that in a couple of different places. We're just starting to research it, so, you know, nothing's been decided, but we are starting to research some of that. And I'm not sure if they would find that applicable to this site or not right now. But, yeah. So it's, it's very preliminarily being looked at for a number of different places.
Are there any other questions on this application? Charlie?
We're a little confused here. Four raised beds, but how many regular beds? I have no idea yet.
I, I'm not sure yet. They're working on finishing, they got the raised flower beds finished. I'm not sure how many of the others are going to be. I think there might be eight to start, but I don't know.
So four plus eight? If I email Kate, will she know?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Or, or Derek, if you email Derek, either one will know. Oh, okay. And I can get that to you as well, if you need. I could have it for you tomorrow morning. Okay?
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
I have application 26 to us, Wesley United Methodist Church Food Pantry, an evening food pantry. Cause they're listed at the top of our. But that's just to us, not to, it's 26. People are probably next to it. Go ahead, sorry.
Good evening, my name is Donna Camp. I'm the Director of the Wesley Evening Food Pantry. We opened in November 2006 in response to United Way report on hunger in Champaign County. At that time, there were no food pantries in Champaign County that had regular evening hours to serve the tens of thousands of working poor in the county. And so in consultation with the Eastern Illinois Food Bank, we chose one night a month to be open. That's the third Thursday of the month. We chose the third week because the Food Bank and United Way studies had shown that when people receive food stamps or they get their paychecks on the first of the month, they run out somewhere about the third week of the month. So our goal was to provide one week's worth of groceries for anyone in need who met the 185% of poverty level standard. So we've been open a year and a half, and the first month, one family of five people came through, and we were all very excited. And last Thursday, we had 280 people served by our food pantry in two hours. And 113 of them were from Urbana, so that's very close to the 41% that is in the application. That was a record for us. We came very close to running out of food. We certainly, we had food, but we were pretty short on selection. We get almost all of our food from the Eastern Illinois Food Bank. So every dollar that gets donated to us buys about $10 worth of groceries. But there are a few items that the Food Bank does not get, cannot afford to purchase with their funds, and those are things like canned meat, milk, whether that's fresh or dried or canned. And right now, the selection of things like vegetables is fairly limited. So we have done, I think, a really excellent job of getting donations from our members. We cover all the cost of the food that we purchase from the Eastern Illinois Food Bank. And right now, I have in, sitting in our bank account, two months ahead. So that feels pretty comfortable. But we, if we want to have canned meat so that people can actually, you know, cook a meal for dinner as opposed to opening a can of ravioli or something like that, we have to purchase it from a grocery store. And we do have some grocery stores that are willing to give us food at cost, but it is still fairly expensive compared to what we can get from the Eastern Illinois Food Bank. So we requested eighteen hundred dollars. That's the equivalent of the number of people who came through the Food Bank from Urbana last month, each getting one can of meat for, per person in their household for six months. So I can, I can repeat that math if you want. But three hundred dollars a month will cover between 100 and 125 people receiving one can of canned chicken that we hope will last them for a week. And then we're providing all the other staples that we can get our hands on. And all of that is nutritious food. We actually purchase based on the USDA food pyramid. There is no candy, no potato chips. And the thing that goes first is always the vegetables. I can never keep enough canned vegetables on the shelf. So that's the, that's my presentation, but I would love to answer any questions that you have about how we work.
Carol?
I have a question. Do you, have you noticed, or do you ask people if they are there because of the increased requirements by the Department of Human Services for food stamp eligibility?
I have not heard anyone say that. I spend a fair amount of my time on Thursday evenings, you know, sitting and talking to people about what's going on with them. And I have not heard that. I have heard, you know, lost my job, lots of people who have been injured and can't work and aren't on salary, you know, or don't have sick leave. Lots of people who are taking care of siblings' children, you know, so there are two families living in one house and trying to make ends meet for both sets of kids.
Yeah, this is a relatively new requirement, so it may take a while for, for people to show up. This is affecting a lot of our clients, that DHS is now requiring 80 hours of public service work for people to remain eligible for food stamps. And if not, then they're getting cut off, which is a significant amount.
Well, and I will say that will affect us a lot, because a lot of people we see are working two jobs.
Eighty hours? A month? A month of public service work. Yeah, and that's also, those township clients who are getting assistance, we require 30 hours, and generally, they can over, you know, they can count 30 hours towards their 80 hours. But I think it's, it's going to affect a significant amount of people, and I can forward you information on that, because it's a very recent change, I believe.
What, what's the need to document that?
I think probably just something from wherever they're doing their public service work. It's not real clear how that works yet, and.
That's very interesting to me, because we have people who are waiting, you know, who get off work at two or three o'clock, and instead of going home, they come and wait in, you know, in our lounge. If we had something, we're already providing services that help them. But if we had something they could be doing, stocking shelves or whatever, we could be providing documentation.
I, I can try and look into that.
Danielle?
Just a quick question for Carol.
Yeah.
Is, is that service work on top of employment? Like if someone's employed full-time or overflow time, they still need to?
Probably not. I think there's an either-or, and I don't know exactly what the, the cutoff is. It's been increased periodically, every couple of years, that you either be employed a certain number of hours in addition to some public service work. I'm just, I'm more familiar with our clients who tend not to be employed in its 80 hours for them, but I can find out that information as well.
And what was it before? What was the threshold in terms of public service work for food stamps, do you know?
I think, well, it's gone back and forth from nothing to maybe 20 or 25, and then they just didn't enforce it, I think, or they didn't follow up on it. So it's not real clear to me what the jump was from. But, but I'll try and follow up.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Donna or Carol?
Partly because I think that we can make up the other six months. We've already been fairly successful once with doing, you know, ask everybody for two or three weeks in a row to bring a can of chicken. And it takes about two months to get one month's worth of distribution. I think also that there are some groups at Parkland that are willing to do, they've already done a cereal drive. I think they might be willing to do a canned meat drive. So I feel like I can get the other six months.
Any other questions? Dennis?
So you're not necessarily required to take food donations only from the Illinois Food Bank? There's not, there's not a, a regulation or a safety concern that's overlaying the donation of food to your organization?
No.
It could come from individuals or households?
Yes.
To the, to the office?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just very difficult, if you think about how much food it takes to feed 280 people. It's something like 50 cases of complete meals, like ravioli or chicken and dumplings or something like that. I think I'm at 70 cases of canned vegetables. So people doing individual donations really don't help us very much, because we have to spend time figuring things out. And I don't put out food unless there's enough. I think this is going to go through the whole night. I don't want the first 10 people in line to get, you know, the, the cakes that we had, and, and nobody else gets any. So we have another program at the church, which is an emergency box program. So individual donations of cans get put on the shelves for, you know, somebody who's in an emergency needs to have something delivered to their house. But we're, we're talking, you know, three or four pallets of food that's coming in, you know, large quantities.
What's the church address?
It's 1203 West Green Street in Urbana. It's the corner of Green and Goodwin.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next I have application for us, it would be 34, for the Center for Women in Transition.
Hello. I'm John Sullivan, I'm the Executive Director for the Center for Women in Transition. And thank you for putting us in tonight. I know last Monday you had a pretty busy agenda. And thank you to Heather for being such a super shopper at Jerry's IGA some months ago. The application this year, the amount requested for the Center for Women in Transition is 25,000. That is up 4,000 dollars from the previous year. And essentially, that's for the increase in minimum wage, because most, unfortunately, most of our house supervisors, the much as we can afford to pay is minimum wage for the house staff. And for the 11% increase in health insurance that's coming down the pipeline to us in the next year. And that pretty much swallows that, that money up and keeps us the same as we were last year, essentially. The program to be funded is the whole center. We don't subdivide into programs. But 4,000 of that is the UPS Unlimited Possibility Service Center mortgage, which the Consolidated Social Fund has currently funded. And this was built with community money and HUD money, and completed in 2006, which you won the Governor's Club for. The other is the 21,000 dollars for staffing, Children's Program Coordinator, 8,000, and the house supervisors. The house supervisors pretty much run the center during the evenings and weekends, providing overnight staffing and double staffing over the weekends and between 5:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. at night. And the Children's Program Coordinator coordinates everything that goes on with the children at the center. Last year, we had seven infants who were born at the center. So we had seven infants born into homelessness. She partners with the doulas, the people that go to the hospital, runs programs while the women are in programs themselves, getting support, counseling. So we care for their children while these women are in, in other services. We are presently moving towards opening our fourth house, which is kind of just around the corner from us on North Fifth Street. This is going to be a house for, for single women. We're not sure whether it's going to be transitional or permanent. We're not really sure. We're waiting to see what the details of the NOFA HUD comes out in the summer in terms of what they will fund, so we can get some. If they're funding transitional, it'll be transitional. If they're funding permanent, it will most probably be permanent. We, you'll see that the number of recipients, we can have the capacity to serve is 54. This is a very difficult figure to nail down, because sometimes we have women with one child in a room. Sometimes we have a woman with two child, two children and an infant. So the, the numbers can fluctuate enormously. As in the number of people we can serve in a year can fluctuate enormously. The number of people who live in Urbana, we really kind of have to guestimate, because the people coming in are homeless, they don't have an address. A lot of people come out of the program from All Women's Fund, and we work with them closely to give those women housing. And a lot of women say, well, my car is parked in the car park in Urbana. Okay, then we'll say you're from Urbana, but the car could have been parked for the next night in Champaign. Another thing in terms of value for money, in terms of your funding, this year, we started the only emergency shelter for women in the county in partnership with the First United Methodist Church and the Time Center. Women will come to the center between 5:30 and 7:30. We've closed the program now, it's between January and April, the coldest part of the year, just so that people wouldn't freeze to death in their cars. And we screen them, which is another house supervisor duty, which you fund. And the First United Methodist Church has a van, takes them to their church, they house them there in the morning, they take them to the Time Center, and basically, they do the loop every day throughout the year. And it started off slow, but by the end of the last month, they had six women every night in the program, and we managed to house one of them. So five women kind of finished the emergency program and went back to being homeless. So there's kind of the Center for Women in Transition.
Are there any questions for John?
Ooh, in the last year, at the moment, we've got 23. I couldn't tell you in terms of the full total throughout the fiscal year.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And last on my agenda, I have application number 42, the Prairie Center Health Systems Day Treatment Program for adults.
Good evening. My name is Betty Seidel, and I'm the Director of Development for Prairie Center Health Systems. We're located at 718 Kalarney Street on the north, northern end of Urbana. And we have not applied for grant funding from Urbana for, I think, maybe four years. The program that we are asking for some assistance with is a program that we started in 2005, and it was funded for two years by the State of Illinois, a special grant, a member initiative, that last year was, got in the middle of a budgetary things that went on in Springfield, and it was line item vetoed in, in August of last year. So we had funding for this day treatment program, which is for adults that have addictions to high-intensity drugs, and that typically would mean either methamphetamine or crack cocaine. and that typically would mean either methamphetamine or crack cocaine. And I think most of you are aware that over the last, it's not quite as bad as it was, but for the first part of the 2000s, we had a spike in the use of methamphetamine. And we, the people who are addicted to methamphetamine don't typically just show up on our doorstep one day. A lot of them were brought to us, referred to us by the court system. So the court system had a lot of people that got locked up for illegal use of drugs. And so judges sent a growing number of people with these addictions to our treatment program. And we actually were not prepared, as the same phenomenon happened across the United States, we did not have an appropriate treatment response. So we really worked on this really hard and we determined that there wasn't any way that we could get the people with these strong addictions into our inpatient or even in inpatient across the state of Illinois. Because I found out this morning that we had a community forum on substance abuse at the Park Inn this morning and one of our speakers said that there were, right now there are 7,600 people a day that are waiting for inpatient treatment for an addiction to any drug in the state of Illinois. So a lot of the people who have the addiction to either methamphetamine or another drug like crack cocaine, which is a very intense addiction, need typically inpatient treatment. But faced with this problem of not having any capacity for that, we developed a step-down program, which is, we called it day treatment. So it's partial hospitalization is the closest thing I can think of that you might be familiar with. And it is, instead of coming nine hours a week, which is most typical for people with an addiction or dependency on a drug, nine hours for intensive outpatient or a 28-day program, this is about 15 to 20 hours a week. And because of the nature of this addiction, we have used, we trained and we have our counselors trained in special therapy. We have a case manager that deals with all the problems that the person got themselves into because of their addiction, such as not having housing. Vast majority of people that come to us do not have stable housing. They're not employed. They have very low incomes and not much going for them. So it takes a lot of handholding, a lot of instruction, a lot of education and counseling to get them to a point where, first of all, they're clean and they're able to take on their regular responsibilities and, you know, looking for a job and having, earning some money so that they can take care of their families. So it does take, this kind of treatment does take more intensive kind of wraparound services for adults. And that would take a case manager and also transportation mostly. If you can't get them in, then you can't do any treatment. So we do have extensive outreach for this program. Since the funding ended, it would have been about November 1st of 2007, we still have some referrals from the courts and we still have quite a few referrals from the child welfare system. So in saying that, although most of the people that we serve are males and they are people who have a relationship typically with the criminal justice system, there also were a growing number of women who had a family attached to them, children, that were getting involved with the drug methamphetamine. So that had a different impact and a sense of urgency to take care of that population too because it had a greater impact to a greater number of people. We use cognitive behavior therapy because this helps get to the problems that the person who is abusing drugs, their beliefs, their behaviors and their attitudes. We served about 50 clients a year under this $200,000 grant, which was actually shared between our outpatient facility in Bremley County and the one here in Urbana. We have about 60 people on a waitlist and that is down from what it was some time ago. And that's another thing, that it's very difficult to see that somebody is hurting, that they are ill, and yet you still can't get them into an appropriate level of care. We do have a fee, don't have a fee for anybody who's indigent, but if, once they start making some money, if they have a job, part-time job or something, then they are assessed based on ability to pay, a small fee to help pay for the treatment. Because lots of this is medically involved. We have a medical director that has to get involved with every one of these cases because there are medical aspects to addiction. Some of the people are also enrolled in our Drug Court program, which we have through the Champaign County Drug, through the Champaign County Court system. And those folks may also be receiving some day treatment services. We had about a 60 to 75% success rate with the people with these addictions. That was six months after treatment. They were still clean and sober, employed, taking care of their major responsibilities. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions or comments for Betty? Mayor?
What kind of follow-through do you have, like for a year or two years afterwards?
At this point, we don't have the funding that we can do anything beyond six months. I think with our Drug Court program, which we had a federal grant for, and some of these people would be involved in that, not very many, but some, that is up to one year follow-up.
And what kind of rates are there after one year?
For Drug Court, it's about 60%.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, that's for staying clean. 60% stay clean. A higher percent is about 75% do not reoffend. So there really is a correlation to, you know, the public safety aspect. And the longer the person is in treatment, the more intensive it is, the less likely they are to reoffend and to also reengage in the drug habit.
Robert?
You mentioned a number of 60, 7,600 people that were in the state. What was that population most significantly found?
I don't know the answer to that. It's, that's the whole state of Illinois. Our 65 would have gone into that whole number.
Okay, thanks.
So it's, it's an extensive problem throughout the state of Illinois capacity for higher-end treatment.
Have they ever tried to determine how much that was per person? That you had to expend to bring them to a point of being independent?
If you're talking about treatment, how much it costs?
Per person?
Average for a typical, if it's just outpatient and it doesn't involve inpatient treatment, it's about $5,000 a year. And for, if it's a longer term, because there are some, our agency only has about 28 days, but we do have people longer if they need it. The longer-term treatment is obviously much more. It costs about $35,000 a year to incarcerate somebody through the Department of Corrections.
Sure.
So if you have somebody that goes through a treatment program, $5,000 a year, which is the average, and then that person is paying taxes, you know, and taking care of their obligations, I can't really do the math here, but I know that it's quite a substantial difference in, you know, $35,000 to lock somebody away. And there aren't, it's really hard to come out of Department of Corrections and start all over again. I think most of you are aware of that. So if we can keep people out, I think that's what we should try to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Betty? Comments?
Thank you. Thank you.
Betty?
Oh, no, actually not for you, Betty, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I had two other questions before we adjourn, just about the funding as a whole. I don't know if that's appropriate now. Okay. Kelly, my first question was, and I apologize that we were late. I was in Springfield all day, so was Danielle, and we apologize. We drove as fast as we could under the legal speed limit. And we were not talking on a cell phone. The whole drive, no one was talking on a cell phone. In the city of Champaign, I understand that they might be doing cuts to social service and I didn't understand, I read something briefly in the paper. I didn't understand if that was the equivalent of this program in Champaign is being cut. How does that change the community-wide situation? How does it change any of the people that we might fund? Are there programs that just plain aren't going to happen because they're not sustainable if both cities aren't footing the bill together? Does that matter as we make allocations?
That's a lot of questions. Let me, let me start by, from what I gather in Champaign, they changed the type of money that they use to fund, starting with this fiscal year. They were using community development block grant money to fund. And there were some conflicts of interest and such, so they decided to use another fund, the urban renewal, to pay for this year. And then the city council decided that they no longer wanted to fund their community service grants and wanted to look more at neighborhoods. Rather than having a pile of money, having agencies apply for that money, they wanted to look at, target neighborhoods. And I believe the first one they're targeting is the Garden Hills area. And so what they're going to do is look at the neighborhoods and what is needed in the neighborhoods and then invite agencies that are going to maybe provide those services to apply. And this coming year, I believe is the last year that they're even going to be doing the urban renewal and the community service grants, and then they're looking into the neighborhoods. So as of right now, the applications that we received, it hasn't reflected any of that. But I'm not sure about next year.
So for this one more year, the social service organizations that are community-wide would still have access to funding and next year is the year?
I believe so.
Okay.
And then the year after that, then, then there won't be the same thing and so it could, could change.
Okay.
I believe that that's, that's correct from what I've heard and what I've read.
Okay. My second question was, in the memo, thank you, I got the memo from you about this process and the total budget in the memo for social service was $290,000, $120,000. And last year's was $288,800. I, it looks like that's about a 1% increase over last year's dollar amount. And I, I just wanted to sort of raise the question with you and perhaps see what conversations you've had with the mayor, or sort of where in the budget process we're at. Because I recall from prior years, we'd had a conversation about trying to increase this pool of funding by 3% each year. I know the CDBG share is not going up because the federal government doesn't, but most of the share is from the city general funds. And I think in past years, after some conversations, we ended up at a 3% increase in our contribution to this pool. So that those organizations that come with us, come to us each year with usual staff costs, minimum wage going up, we heard about, healthcare going up. Just like our city employees all get a 3% raise, our union contracts are about at 3% annually. It seems like this pool, to keep, as we historically have, to keep at a 3% increase is fair to the agencies. And I wondered if, sort of what the status of the discussion was, is that number really finalized? Or is it something, and I don't know if you've even come to the mayor yet with a budget request, is it something you've talked about keeping this at the three again, instead of the smaller increase?
The figures that I got, for the city general fund, I got from Ron Eldridge. And again, these are all estimates, Cunningham Township. Carol, last I knew, she was still working on the budget and so this figure could go up. So.
You didn't tell the people to limit their requests?
No, I did not.
Okay, so the union contracts are actually more than 3%?
Yes.
And I think we're going to have a hard time with 3%. We're still adding up all these things. We're, you know, seeing what we can cut. So I think if we can give them what they're asking, even if it's not 3%, that that's quite an achievement. Because I think we were funding, like the Urban League, I think we had a few thousand dollars for the Urban League, so that may explain why this is less than 3% because one agency is no longer making a request, or do they have a request in there? We didn't hear it today, at least. I think they've cut back on the budget programs.
Danielle?
I have some similar concerns to what Brandon brought up in terms of the Champaign issue. And I think that we're one community, but we're two different municipalities. And so as a result, we have a situation that we need to figure out how to have a conversation about it. And the situation is twofold. The first is that the township in Champaign, the city council, the township trustees have not been funding the township. And so they don't have hardly any general assistance or medical assistance funds. And so, you know, the amount that they're paying out to clients is pennies compared to what the Cunningham Township is doing. And the second is that the city of Champaign is now talking about taking what essentially is a third of the support that we provide, even though we're half the size, and actually potentially cutting that or reorganizing it such that programs that have been stable, that rely on some of that funding, actually have to dissolve and reconfigure themselves around particular priorities of the Champaign council and administration. And so, okay, Champaign can do what it wants, it's its own municipality, but this has consequences. Both of these things have consequences for the city of Urbana and the Cunningham Township. And I'm not sure exactly where the conversation can happen or how we can have that conversation. Or, you know, should the township trustees here in the city council write a letter with a particular set of concerns and ask for, for some responses to some questions about how it is that Champaign is going to support the sustainability of social service agencies that have come to rely on that portion of the funding in addition to our portion of the funding, given that they're basically pulling the bottom out of that funding. So I think that in some ways, this is, you know, perhaps it's the staff from the two cities who frequently communicate and coordinate, having some kind of conversation about that. So that, you know, because sometimes we have this situation where the right hand's doing one thing, the left hand is doing something else, and as a result, people fall between the cracks. And that's what I'm seeing with these two issues, is people are falling between the cracks and it's, we need to figure out how to initiate some sort of conversation. And we also need to be able to talk about this in the community in some way. So a forum about poverty and a discussion of what the, what social service funding looks like in our community, what kinds of needs are going to happen if there's a recession coming up, what kinds of waiting lists exist for the different, for both public housing as well as, and housing vouchers, as well as the different social service agencies? Because there's got to be some way in which the decision, some of the decision-makers behind funding, the local decision-makers, meaning the city councils, have some big picture conversations about poverty in our community and the ways in which we're going about addressing poverty. So that's, I feel like we need some more information about what Champaign's vision is. Like if they have a memo that came out, I'd like a copy of that in our next packet. If the staff has talked about, given some history about the shift from social services to urban renewal to neighborhood-based projects, I'd like us to be aware of those decisions. And if, if there has been discussion about, okay, now that you're not funding the Boys and Girls Club, what's the Boys and Girls Club going to do, or the Urban League? Or there's only about five groups that they've funded. They tend to fund big chunks of money with a small number of groups, where we tend to fund both medium to small amounts of money for a large number of people. So I guess I just want to have some kind of coordination function and more information between the cities.
Are there any other, Charlotte?
Do we have a volunteer to, to put together the spreadsheet this year? I know I don't have time to do it. Danielle's done it the last couple of years. I don't think she should be expected to do it again. Somebody can step forward.
Yeah, well, last year, staff supported me a lot more than, so wasn't like, I mean, I think that maybe we can send things to, to staff if you'd be willing to accept the first round and then we can, I'd be happy to help average those and try to come up with a motion if there's some other, there's only two of us who can talk at a time. But if there's some other person who feels particularly strong about social service funding, we could, two could coordinate together to come up with some kind of motion. And then, of course, the council can change things on the council committee or on the council floor. So I'd be happy to play the role I did last year, which was much less intensive than the year before. Because staff-
Are there any other questions or comments regarding social service funding? Well, that we have no more business on the agenda, this meeting stands adjourned.